Terrific. All right, now we're going to go to the presentation of the Town Administrator's Fiscal 26 Budget Change Memo, number one. And we have Police Chief Keith Boone and Fire Chief Justin Alexander here as well.
Thank you, Dottie. And if I could jump in, just for folks who are joining us tonight, we see we have a handful of people on Zoom, which we appreciate. Just expectation setting here, the chiefs and I will give a presentation, and then questions afterwards would be routed through the Chair of the Board. So chiefs, I'd ask you to come up with us now. Want to say thanks to the Board, thanks to folks here, and anyone tuning in. For those joining us for a first time tonight, my name is Connor Viedem, the Town Administrator here in Easton. This coming year will be the ninth annual budget that I have led in my career. It will be the 13th that I have worked on in my career. And none of them have been as challenging as this one. So the chiefs are here tonight to speak in their own words about their operations. But before we get there, I would like to just give a quick overview of the budget process that we have to follow. Since the publication of the preliminary budget in January, residents in Easton have been engaging with difficult questions about what the coming year presents. Those newer to the process, who might have engaged through promoting a sustainable Easton, might be asking, why are we hearing about cuts to town and school departments if PACE was created by Town Meeting last year to try to fix some of these challenges? And the answer is that because regardless of where PACE lands with their final recommendations next month, towns and schools have to legally prepare balanced budgets for Town Meeting that can't assume overrides. Town budgets are unique. They are not like the federal government. We cannot deficit spend when we have an operating gap. We cannot borrow to cover operating gaps. We have to balance our expenses to our revenues every single year. Budgets also can't assume a speculative future electoral action. We can't put a budget together, or at least a single budget forward to voters at Town Meeting in May, that is predicated on an override potentially being approved by voters in the future. We can produce choices for the public. We can have more than one budget on the warrant. That's relatively typical. It's happened here. It happens in communities around the state. But we do have to build a balanced budget where we bring our expenses in line with our revenues without the assumption of an override. And to do that, when we have a budget gap that starts as large as it did this year, which is over $6 million, we have no choice but to significantly cut our budgets. The challenges that we're going to work through in the next three months are informed by where we've come from in the past 20 years. In 2006, voters in Easton approved the last operating override that we've had. That was one year after approving a debt exclusion for the high school and middle school. Voters in Easton have, for decades, been very supportive of debt exclusions, which are unique. Those are revenues that can only fund capital projects. They cannot be used to fund operations. But operating overrides have been very rare. Unfortunately, two years after that last override, the town's revenue took a big hit when state aid, which is our second-largest source of income, got cut in the recession. It took eight years until 2016 for that state revenue to come back up to 2008 levels. That's forced a really frustrating reality for our residents, where they see their tax bill go up each year, yet hear the town claim that it's having revenue challenges. And that's because those increased local taxes have simply just been filling a growing gap of state aid, which used to provide 25 cents on every budget dollar for Easton, now pays just 13 cents. The town saw an operating override in 2016 to address that revenue gap born out of those cuts to state revenue, which voters did not approve. Austere operating budgets have followed for the decades since. In the years following that failed override, we continued to advance work identified by the town's Comprehensive Facilities Program, which was funded by voters in 2013, that ultimately led to debt exclusions for Blancham's and the public facilities. We also took a deep dive into our own operating budgets, because voters funded an operational audit, which found that Easton spends far fewer dollars per resident than neighboring communities and comparable towns and school districts. This was corroborated repeatedly over years of benchmarking, and most recently with PACE's own work spread out over many months and dozens, if not hundreds, of hours of public meetings where they've been reviewing town and school operations in great detail publicly. While, of course, do differ on the merits of any one job or program, that Easton spends fewer dollars per resident on public and school services than most communities in the entire state is a matter of fact. Conservative budget management, coupled with winning tens of millions in grants to support new growth and infrastructure, has allowed Easton to continue providing quality services without an operating override for the past 19 years. But what's really changed, as far as the severity of our budget gap, has occurred in the past 18 months. And what that is, is that we have been experiencing unprecedented growth of health insurance, property insurance, energy and transportation costs since Fiscal 24. These are things that people are experiencing in their own personal finances. But on our scale, with the amount of real estate, we have the fleet to ensure the amount of personnel and retirees, we ensure it's pushing us to a breaking point. Just before items that are itemized on screen have grown by $3.6 million in the past two years, which is more than half of the coming year's budget shortfall. The only way to balance a budget with a deficit to size is through substantial cuts or through an override. Addressing this next year, leveraging more savings funds, reorganizing, or getting creative is not going to do it this time. So then the next question folks often ask is, well, why is this happening in Easton? What are we doing here? And while it's cold comfort, it's not actually just happening in Easton. This is happening all over the state. As insurances and other fixed costs are squeezing the expense side, revenue has taken a hit from a growing number of school districts, now two-thirds of them, sliding into what's called minimum state aid status. And that means that regardless of how much statewide public education spending grows every year, and there's been plenty of articles about that, whether it's going up 3%, 5%, 10% on a statewide level, your district, including Easton's district, is entitled to the minimum funding increase allowed by law, which is $30 per student. For Easton, that equates to roughly $100,000 of new state revenue, or two tenths of 1% of the Easton Public School budget. The result in Easton and around the state that we're seeing is growing municipal deficits, and the frequency of operating override requests throughout Massachusetts doubling in the past 18 months. So bringing it back to our budget as we head into July, where do we stand? We've made progress, and I issued an update to the budget today, that the Board has received, that's on our website, that folks can read along with, and we'll publish this presentation as well. We've made some good progress. We've reduced our preliminary deficit since January from 6.3 to 5.44 million. This includes adjustments to both revenue and expense budgets. The largest portion of deficit reduction has come from $569,000 in cuts and adjustments to town services and budgets. These cuts are offset by increases in regional school assessments, an increase to the reserve fund from the Finance Committee, and an anticipated deficit in the snow and ice budget, which results in a net decrease in our expenses of $397,000. Included in those adjustments are $288,000 in cuts to general government, health and community services, and public works. These will eliminate three full-time jobs and shift approximately a fourth, an additional full-time equivalent, out of the general fund budget and into fees. School cuts are forthcoming, pending presentation to the School Committee Leader this spring. And as the remaining $5.4 million budget gap demonstrates, the size of the deficit here necessitates cuts everywhere. And the largest dollar reductions will have to flow from the largest departmental budgets. Regrettably, this will have to include public safety. Budget reductions to date have not accounted for cuts to public safety, but because they're, these departments are the largest non-school operation, you see them highlighted on screen here at about $12.6 million, they will need to be reduced in order for us to close the remaining $5.4 million gap. The chiefs and I wanted to share with the community the types of decisions that they're considering for the coming July in order to do so. And while the final number of positions and the exact dollar amounts in public safety are a moving target, we can say with certainty that both departments' budget requests for next year will be reduced, staffing will decrease in both. And so the chiefs and I felt it was on balance the best choice to start this discussion with the Board and the public as early as we can, ahead of Town Meeting in May. And at this point, I would like to turn it over to the chiefs, and I believe Police Chief Boone is up first.
Good evening, everyone, again. Keith Boone, the Police Chief. As a Town Administrator, just mentioned, you know, we've been working on this budget for several months now. One thing that's important to note is going into fiscal year '25, we had a retirement, and we froze that position because we needed to balance the budget last year. Going into this budget cycle, luckily, we have another retirement that was coming in this upcoming July. So no one's losing their job. But we were planning on staffing that position, and now that position is gone as well. So just out of the gate, we're down two police officers in consecutive years.
How many officers do we have generally?
So we've been staffed to 39, which is lower than our average, which I'll get to.
Do you want me to move it to...
Yeah, you can flip the slide.
I got you.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't, I won't ask any questions.
No, that's perfect.
You probably have all the answers up there.
No, this is a discussion. So, you know, if you have any questions come up, we'll go through them. So we were staffed at 39 when I took over as chief three years ago. The highest we got to was 39, and shortly thereafter, in the next fiscal year, we did go down. So we've been going backwards over the last few years. Another update that just came to me Friday morning, we do have an officer right now on military deployment. I was expecting him back next week. Now I'm not expecting him back for the calendar year. The world's crazy right now. I think everyone knows that. There's things going on in the country, around the world. So I don't even have a timeframe when he'll be back, but I'm expecting him to be gone for the calendar year. So that's dropping our number of people coming to work to 36. We're budgeted for 37, but we're only going to have 36 people coming into work on July. So what does that look like? It's 22% lower than our comparable comps. So if we were at the average, we should, again, have 46 police officers, and this is something we talked about during our PACE presentation and several budget updates over the years. Where is our money going? We are so heavily relied on staffing for 94% is our budget is allocated to people. So the people are coming to work is 94% of our budget. Our expense is extremely lean, and there's nowhere else to cut. You know, we've looked at areas in expenses. It's very insignificant. It's all people. So how are we going to absorb these losses? So things that I know we're going to do, that I've already decided, is following our time in July, we're going to drop our detective division from four to three. For some perspective, the town of Norton, a surrounding town, smaller population, smaller police department, they have five detectives. We should probably have six to seven. We have four right now, and we're going to go backwards. What does that look like? Lower clearance rates, longer response times for investigations, and really just limiting our capacity to what's required with major crimes, crimes of violence, domestic violence, things like that. Everyone knows, we had a significant critical incident, we had a shooting a month ago. Just to give you a look at what detectives look like when something like that happens.
(mimicking a bell)
Everything stopped in the detective unit while they were working on that. And so they worked, brown the clock, for about two and a half weeks, identifying suspects and working with multiple agencies. And thankfully, we identified and made arrests. But while that was happening, everything gets put on hold. And actually, during that time span, we had two sexual assaults come in, that they can't get put on hold. So now, we're burning out our detectives to try to finish one task and deal with the shooting, and then go down to Fall River to meet with the CAC. It looks like another thing that could come up is, we've had a lot of car breaks. We've had a lot of stolen cars. We were successful in identifying and arresting a multi-state theft ring that we were very proud of. Our detectives did that. Things like that just get put on hold when we have to prioritize crimes of violence. Another thing we're going to do, I got creative with a split shift, and we're going to divide a supervisor into a split shift, two day shifts, two 4 to 12 shifts. So while we can't fully staff in both, we can try to give a couple days on both. We're a young department. We have a great department, but we need supervision. So we're trying to spread that out the best we can. But the challenge that comes with that is, we should have a dedicated court prosecutor that is a supervisor, something we had in 2015, that we still can't get to today. So we're not even back to where we were 10 years ago. So our detectives have to not only handle court and all these investigations, they're going to be down to three. So not fair to them. It's something I struggle with, with burnout and things like that. So some things that might happen come July, I'm still working on some ideas I have. But again, there's nowhere to cut. So where the only item, line item I have, where I can make some type of flexibility, is our overtime budget. So if I have to cut a large chunk of overtime to balance our budget, that's going to lead to staffing as much as I can on our patrol division. So we have calls to service handled. It's not ideal, but I think using a split shift and some variation is going to get us to where we can manage. That's going to affect our community outreach program, which I'm very passionate about. Right now, we have a community outreach officer dedicated with a town clinician. Last year, they had 259 follow-ups. That's just home visits post-incident, not in real-time calls to service. We've made tremendous strides in the last three years. It's something I've thanked the town, the people here, supported that, hiring a mental health clinician to help the police and fire do these things. We've helped so many families and individuals. It's very sad and disappointing to think that come July, this is going to change. Scheduling-wise, without question. It's not going to look like it does today, but it might have to go all away altogether. We might have to shelve that, because I have to do what I can to keep the shifts balanced. Another thing I'm thinking about is some shift, some shifting in our night shifts. What does that look like? It could look like lowering our minimum staffing, which I don't feel comfortable with, to be honest with you. You know, I have an obligation to provide the best service we can for the town, but I also have an obligation to our officers and their welfare. So I don't want to see them get burnt out. We've toyed with the idea before of a dark station model. I know some towns do it. To be honest with you, it's, I don't know how that would even work to stand here as the police chief and tell you, yeah, we're going to close the door at midnight. So if you need anything, call the number on the door, and we'll have an officer respond to the parking lot to help you. You know, I know some towns do that out of necessity, but that's embarrassing for me as a chief and as a resident, to think I wouldn't be able to drive to the police station to meet with a police officer 24 hours a day, seven days a week is, again, it's 2025, and I just feel like we're better than that in Easton. We are. So those are some of my concerns in where we're going. We haven't made all the decisions yet on the shift movement, but I'm really limited to what I can do. That's the direction we're heading right now.
Thank you, Chief. I guess I'll turn it over to Chief Alexander to take us through Fire as well.
Thank you. So where are we with Fire? Well, the problem with Fire is, a little bit of quick background. The last couple of years, we've all, as our department knows the budget-making process, we submit a level service budget, and we've all been trimmed as part of the budget-making process. So that kind of puts us behind the eight ball to begin with, with a budget that's historically tight to begin with. We finish near zero or even the last two years, due to some circumstances I'll talk with, below zero and need assistance to close out our budget. So we're already starting, in this tough budget year coming, behind the eight ball to begin with. We're not the only department that's there. We're also up against the fact that we have, for the last couple of years, had two, IOD is a term you're going to hear a lot tonight, it's injured on duty. You know, the non-public safety version, like workman's comp. So we have two firefighters who are out long-term, and we still have to pay them, and we still have to cover their overtime for the, because they can't work on the ship. So that's going to be a big factor in the conversation tonight, and why some of what we're discussing sounds extreme. But we still have to pay these firefighters, and we have to take care of them because they got hurt in the line of duty. But it still has a factor on the budget. So when you come into what FY '26 is going to look like with the cuts that we're talking about, initially, the preliminary numbers, we're going to have some trouble, because we already run a minimum of eight firefighters amongst the three stations. And as we've talked a lot over the last couple of years, when our ambulance is out from our Bay Road station, there's nobody covering the southern part of town, and that's 25% of the day right now. January and February so far this year, run volumes up 10% year-over-year. So we're still crushing record numbers, and it's not going to get any slower. When you have the cut of the amounts that we're talking about, the problem that we have is that you can't just take one person, let's say a figure, a $70,000 employee, dollar employee, and just take that position out of the fire service, and then just put that towards the cut amount. Half of that amount has to go back into overtime, because that person's no longer there to cover the overtime, to cover the position if someone takes a vacation day. So we can't just go one-for-one. It doesn't work in the fire service, which is a huge problem for us. So we have one position now that's open due to a retirement that happened back in December that was budgeted. So we have that position we can take out for next year. So that's part of it. But you take half of that only, the other half has to go back to overtime. We have a retirement coming in July, same, same thing. We're going to take that money and put that towards, half towards overtime and half towards the cut. That still doesn't get us to even halfway to where we need to be. That's the problem. So where do we go from here? Well, we're working on a couple of plans internally, and there's still a couple of puzzle pieces that need to happen. But I could tell you with some certainty about some of the stuff that will happen. If July 1 comes and the numbers that we're discussing do occur, we're going to have to do a couple of things. We have 44 firefighters in the budget right now on the line, which is line is the term we use for firefighters who respond to the emergencies. We have two day captains who do fire prevention, and they do, they work with Stephanie and Officer Account over at HCS, doing a great community paramedicine and mobile integrated healthcare program, and it's great. But we're going to have to bring them back into the fold to help cover some of that overtime. So now when we combine the two retirements, plus some overtime offset from those fire, from those captains, now we're getting two-thirds of the way there. But where's that last third coming from? Well, we're working a couple of pieces. We don't, I don't have all the answers tonight. But in a couple of versions of the plan, I'll give you our, one version, we would drop a station, we would drop our Lothr Street Station when we have to drop the seven. So instead of dropping a minimum of eight, where we hold eight, we would actually go one lower. Much like Chief Boone said, we're going to run something that I'm not comfortable with, but we're going to have to do it. And what does that look like? Well, if we drop that, and we lose that station, you get the old "closed fire station" sign right out in front, and we lose an ambulance at that point, which also could cover another fire truck when we need it. So that means we're going to go down to one ambulance in those situations. Now, that's not every shift, but it's going to be some shifts. And we're going to have a situation where those would be with one ambulance, which is going to put a delayed response time, because you're not going to have an Easton ambulance available. And it's going to be coming from Stoughton, or West Bridgewater, or Mansfield, or Easton. And I have some experience with the situation in a previous life, and I can tell you, everything I'm telling you is, in fact, true. It will be that way. It will happen. And our mutually partners will see a demand from us that they've never seen in a long time. And so it's not just a burden on Easton, it's a burden on our mutually partners. And that's a real troublesome thing. You should never build a response model around mutually being part of the initial response. It's meant to help catch you when you get a surge, but not your every day. And we're starting to lean towards the every day, and that's not a good model to go to. But at the same time, we only have so much money, and we have to get creative, and we have to do what we have to do. And so we're going to see brownout of Station One crossing the schools, and that'll be, in that first scenario, you'll see that. If the second scenario happens, we'll have an additional, have to cut an additional two active firefighters. So everything I've talked to up to this point is, we can do some through attrition, some through taking people away from their regular jobs and helping them cover overtime, which will delay inspections, will hurt our EMS program and HCS, and some of the vulnerable people in Easton that we take care of. But we, the core mission is we have to respond to 911 calls, and that's why we're doing that. But if the, if Plan B occurs, due to some of the way the puzzle pieces land, we would actually lose two active firefighters. Both are transfers of recent time, and that's very painful. We're going to see two great firefighters here who came here, who believed in coming here, and we're going to lose them. And that's not a place I want to put us. But we would, so we would lose them and see, you would still end up seeing maybe slightly less, but this is not the better option of Station One crossing the schools being closed. But in either scenario, it's going to happen. So we're going to lose our assistance with HCS. We're going to lose our ability to provide, you know, inspections and safety. But even most importantly, is we're going to lose an ambulance and the associated revenue. No, we're not all about making money. We're not profit-driven. But ambulance revenue supports the town and the fire department. And when it's a double-edged sword, when you cut that first ambulance, or the second ambulance, rather, if you will, in this scenario, you not only lose the ability to respond and provide timely care, but the revenue is now going to go to Stoughton, or to West Bridgewater, or to Mansfield. So we hurt ourselves even more on the other side. And you'll see that effect further into FY '26, when the ambulance revenue drops. And that's something that hurts the overall budget. So it's really, this is a position that the town hasn't been in with the fire department in a long time, and it's definitely not a place that I want to see us go. But we have to find a way to close the gap. And unfortunately, if we had a one-for-one, it would be a lot easier, because we'd have the two retirements, and that gets us close, but it doesn't work that way. And what we have to know, that we're going to support those two IOD firefighters, those injured firefighters, for the entire year of Fiscal '26, who will potentially maybe retire, depends on the process works out, we have to cover their salaries. So we're behind the eight ball by two full salaries of firefighters that we're paying that aren't able to contribute by no fault of their own. They got hurt serving the town. I mean, I'm not faulting that. But it doesn't, it still hurts the bottom line, and we have to compensate for that. So when you reduce all that, and then things will be sad, outside of the 911 responses, we're going to lose, you know, things like our open house, which have come to really build up over the last few years, and we love that, and it's a great experience, and our touch of trucks, and our community events, and things that people expect of the fire department. And we're going to lose that. But the, but the big takeaway for us is that, as painful as it is, is we're not going to provide the service people are expecting. There's going to be delays in care, and we're going to lose great firefighters in some of these scenarios. And none of those are things I want to sit here and present to you tonight, but they are real. They are fact, given that if July 1 comes and this budget number comes to the fire department, these are facts. This isn't maybes. This is real. And I want to put my chips on the table and say that this is what we have to do as a fire department with the amount of money that we're going to provide, given the current numbers. Because I know sometimes people are like, well, let's see what happens, or maybe it's not going to happen. Between now and July 1, there's a lot of things going on, but I can speak today, right now, about what we will look like if the number we're talking about tonight for the fire department is what shows up on July 1. That is a fact. And there's just no question. Like I said before, I've done this before, I've been down this road before, and I've had to follow through on this very type of conversation. And I will have to do it again. And I don't want to do it again, but we're here. And we're going to do the best we can, and we're going to do our best to protect all of our residents. And that's what we do, and we'll take greater risk to do it. And that's not something we should do. But we're always going to answer the call. It's just how the call's answered is going to be different. And I think it will be noticeable this time. There's no hiding it anymore. So, and that's, that's the basis of where we're going.
Thank you, Chiefs. Just for the Board and folks who are here with us, I'm going to cover the other departments quickly. I'd ask the chiefs to stay up with us, because I assume many questions will be directed your way. Connor, before we do that, can we just make a comment about what we've heard? Because if we look at it, if we flip this and we say, look at all the progress that's been made, there's a huge difference. You know, so now we can, we can look at the outreach that both, both of you have had to the community, and the way it's changed the relationships with the community. It's, so I, too, hate to see any regression, because the stride, it took a long time to get here. And you guys built up a lot of goodwill with the community. I've never seen the police department be, I think, held in the esteem it's held in. And it's, a lot of thanks to your, both your leadership, but when you guys put out there that you're truly looking out for the best interest of everybody, whether it's a student, or someone, you know, having a mental illness, a crisis, both departments and Health and Community Services have come together and done an amazing job. And so we can't shut that off and then turn it back on. You have to build that, ramp that back up over years to get this working again. So that is a major concern if we shut this off. And it goes for some other departments we'll talk about. But I think it's important we emphasize that. And I hope a lot of people come out Wednesday night to the PACE Open House at, at Blancham's School from 6 to 8. Thank you. Thanks, Chiefs. So while the chiefs have just covered decisions that we're working together on finalizing in the coming weeks, we have already begun implementing cuts to every other town department. And so I'm going to go through some of those now. Public Works in Easton, like all of our departments, you'll see on all, all of these department screens, you'll see that it's kind of a lot going on. But every single one of these screens shows where our departments spend on a per-resident level compared to our neighbors, in yellow, and our comparable communities economically in blue. And you just saw that Police and Fire are below the average. That's also the case with Public Works. They do more with less. Our Public Works Department spends 20% fewer dollars per resident than peer communities.
Our Public Works Department spends twenty percent fewer dollars per resident than peer communities. And ranking, they rank second to last of our neighbors before we start cutting. They employ highly skilled laborers and tradesmen who care for seven hundred and ninety-four thousand square feet of buildings, a hundred and seventeen miles of roadway, two hundred and eighteen acres of parks and fields and a one hundred and thirty-six vehicle fleet. The budget memo issued today cuts two full-time positions from the Public Works Department and reduces their request by a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. That will eliminate the building automation technician and a special equipment operator in the Highway Division. These cuts will damage Easton's ability to maintain its roads and its public buildings. That will necessarily add to deferred maintenance and therefore long-term capital costs, which itself will cascade into those capital costs pushing out other non-safety related funds in the capital expense budget such as school technology or vehicles. Health and Community Services. Health and Community Services is one of Easton's most efficient departments. It is itself a creation of a consolidation and reorganization of what were formerly four distinct departments to promote shared services at a better cost. This is in part how Health and Community Services delivers their programs for forty-six percent fewer dollars per resident in the average peer community. To reduce HCS's budget requests, we will shift fifty-five thousand of their existing general fund staff into fees and grants. Those fees and grants today subsidize losses at the town pool, which has seen its operating gap grow after the pandemic, regrettably. And allow, the grant part of that allows for additional transportation options for our residents, getting to medical and other important appointments. Redirecting these funds will reduce necessarily transportation options for our community and it also means that the town cannot afford to open the pool this summer. This is a hard call, but this shift will help preserve the staff at Frothingham, who currently manage more than one hundred and forty community programs used by thousands. The Recreation Commission suggested we explore licensing the pool to a qualified organization with aquatics experience. If we can't fund it ourselves, which is a great idea and that's something we're exploring, but we can't make promises on that front of this time, but we are, we are working on it. General Government. All our departments spend fewer dollars per resident than their peers, but none of them have as large a disparity in spending as general government does. And that's because although we have clearly not been able to resource public safety and public works where we would want them to be, with the limited growth we do have available, it has prioritized education, safety and public works. General Government spends fifty-two percent below the average of our peers. We spend near the bottom of all towns in the entire state of Massachusetts. And I do not say that as a point of pride. Nonetheless, every department must contribute to closing the deficit. And so General Government will cut one point three five full-time equivalent positions from our budget. That will eliminate a full-time position, which will result in reduced customer service hours for cash collections and bill payment. We are going to reorient the focus of planning, who currently are winning three dollars and forty cents in state and federal grants for every one dollar Easton funds them. We're going to move them away from strategic and vision-based plans to focusing on permitting. We canceled earlier this year the planned hiring of a civil and stormwater engineer between Public Works and Planning, who would have assisted with expediting permitting for our residents and our businesses to get them through that process as timely as we can. And that's so we could redirect the fees and other revenues that are outside of the general fund towards existing staff. So we will, we will go without that improvement. We'll also need to scale back other administration and finance functions like the GFOA budget book, likely end the Citizens Academy after this current class. Reductions to general government will jeopardize our ability to exercise the appropriate oversight and internal controls over our financial, legal, planning, risk management and operations for the entire town government. But as I stated before, and as I'm sure the severity with the Chiefs has been made clear, every cost center is going to have to be reduced. The Easton Schools have a kind of concurrent process, but under Ed reform, the school committee is responsible for the hearing process there. That's not new, that's always the case. The Easton Schools are continuing their efforts to reduce their budget request. Those reductions will ultimately go to the school committee later this spring and will be incorporated into the overall budget. Due to the relative size of the public schools within the total budget, the cuts will be substantial. And they can include cuts to staffing, which will, could lead to increased class sizes, reduce programming and enrichment offerings for our students and non-staff items, including transportation, technology and more. Other non-department budgets have been adjusted since January and reduced the deficit just shy of a hundred and forty thousand. They're itemized up here on screen. There is some good news as far as debt service being reduced from our initial projection. And some not-so-good news in the form of a snow and ice deficit that we are now forecasting and increased regional school costs. The net overall is a positive reduction though, which is about a hundred and forty thousand of progress. On the revenue side, we've updated our forecast by about five hundred and twenty-six thousand. For those following at home or those who maybe have done this a few times, sometimes folks like to, to the Chiefs' perspective, they see the budget process start early. We always have a budget gap when we start and then we always fix it, right? And so sometimes people think that that's us finding money. And that's not what that is. And there's a few important pieces baked in there. First of all, when we usually start the budget process, the gap is closer to one to two million in a typical year. This year it was over six, so the scale is just not comparable. But setting that aside, when we upgrade a revenue forecast by five hundred thousand, which is equivalent to less than half a percent of our hundred million dollar budget, that's not because we're finding money, that's because as time is passing, we are getting newer monthly and quarterly year-to-date actual collections on local receipts. We're getting new information from the state as far as what their budget proposal, which impacts our budget is. And so we take care to be conservative and not overestimate those revenues because we don't, as hard as this budget process is and as perhaps easy as it would make a lot of our lives right now, we said, well, you know what? I'm feeling like local receipts is going to go up five million, so we're all done here. We can't do that. So we have to follow the actual collections through the year and we refine the outlook for the coming July based on actual collections. But to be clear, as we do refine revenue forecasting, it, we're not going to refine our way up by five and a half million, which is roughly the size of a remaining problem. So where do we go from here? We've made progress, but five point four million is still substantial. We're still a long way from home. The coming three months are going to be very difficult. We have some immediate next steps coming this March. A really huge one is that the Group Insurance Commission, which provides insurance for our active and retirees, our active employees and retirees, they will set their rates for fiscal 26 at the end of this week. This plus any other insurance adjustments that we make are going to be reflected in the next budget update in March. We also will learn what fiscal 26 rates for property casualty and liability insurances are from our existing and competitive carriers. Collective bargaining, all seven town unions contracts expire at the end of June. We've been having good conversations with all of our union leaders and appreciate their collaboration as we try to find a way forward here under some pretty uncertain times. However, and this is not something I have not let these union leaders know, if we don't have agreements by March, we are going to pull the COLA that we have budgeted out of the budget because I, it is my opinion that when we're making choices as difficult as what the Chiefs are talking about, we should not be carrying a prospective contractual outcome at the cost of laying off active employees. So we're trying to wrap those things up and I can't say enough how much I appreciate our unions and our employees for working with us on that. Fees. Boards and departments are in the process of raising fees. The Board of Health has already raised fees. We're looking at building, planning and Concom are coming up. Select Board has new licenses. We have not raised many fees for many years in Easton. We do not try to add an additional burden on top of taxation to folks. But when we have a revenue gap this severe and when we're having to make budget choices as difficult, then this is the appropriate thing to do. Finally, in March, we'll make a proposal for stabilization fund use. We still don't have any of that carried in the budget because again, I don't think it would be appropriate this early to lay those funds out because that could misconstrue to the public the size and severity of a problem. I want to stress, and I think I did in the beginning, and if I didn't, I apologize to everyone listening, that all the cuts that we've discussed tonight, that the Chiefs have discussed tonight are painful. You can see it in the Chiefs, I hope it seems sincere for me. These are, none of us get up and come to work to want to do this. We care about this community, we care about our employees, we care about our first responders. But we have a legal obligation to balance the budget. And so the cuts we're discussing are based on what we expect to be available from revenue against the massive increase in healthcare and other costs we have to pay that are not optional for us to, to not pay so we can fund these departments. And so this is a reflection of the accounting exercise we must do. It is not a reflection of our belief in the value of these departments. And while the cuts that we need to plan are upsetting, they shouldn't be a surprise. We have narrowed our operating margins as the Chief touched on, more than ninety percent of his budget expenses have been hollowed out over years. For nearly twenty years now, especially following the failed override in two thousand and sixteen, it warned that this day would eventually arrive. But there is, I think, good news and I don't want to end it on that. Budget years like this are extremely upsetting. They're distressing for the people who work here, they're upsetting for the community. And the choices that people have to consider are difficult. There's no easy out. Whether PACE recommends an override and the community considers that or not, that's not an easy answer either. That, you know, any discussion of an override is a discussion of folks who are already struggling to make ends meet, falling further behind, or a young family that can never start out here at all, or a business getting pushed behind, a senior not able to make ends meet. There's no easy answer. But I still want to close this with a word of hope, which is that one way or another, come July, Easton will have a new normal, will have a new baseline. And while that prospect brings with it the fear of uncertainty, the thing we should take solace in is the certainty that we will have a choice. We've been really heartened by the work of PACE, where residents have spent dozens, if not hundreds of hours now, working towards solutions with us and to see how many of our neighbors are getting engaged. None of us up here, not me, not the board, not the Chiefs, not the superintendent, can unilaterally adopt budgets for twenty-five thousand people. So wherever we do land come July will ultimately reflect the choice of this community. I've asked the board on the agenda tonight to confirm that they intend to offer voters a choice of a budget, this town meeting balanced through cuts or a budget that sustains services with an override pending PACE's final recommendation this coming March. That's not the same as actually calling an election for anyone following along. That would be premature because we don't have a budget finalized, nor is it a board imposing an override. That was one of the questions that came up at PACE from a member of the public. The board has a lot of legal authority and responsibility, but the Select Board can't simply take a vote and say, we're raising taxes. That's not how it works in the state. I don't think many people would like if it worked that way in the state. I think because people did not like how it worked, that's how Prop two and a half came into existence. But the, the board can give voters a choice. And so as we work towards town meeting, I hope that people stay engaged. I hope people get educated. We have tried to do better, making resources available. All of those web resources are right on screen if you go to easton.ma.us/fy26budget. You, if you're not, I really, really hope you sign up for the Town Crier. We send weekly updates through there. Perhaps some of the folks joining us on Zoom joined this meeting because we specifically flagged it there. We want folks to get engaged and get educated because you will need to take part in some incredibly important and difficult choices for your own community. And we hope to see many of you two nights from now at the open house that PACE is hosting at Blanche Ames from six to eight. So that's what I have prepared. I appreciate the board giving myself and the Chiefs your time and the three of us can take your questions.
All right, so what we're going to do is we're going to have the, open it up for the board to have questions. Then we'll open it up to the people in the room. And then, do we have a lot of questions on Zoom or?
We don't have any questions.
We don't have any questions on Zoom, so that makes it easier. All right, Jamie.
You know, I'm going to make this pretty personal. Before I got involved with the town, I was an oblivious member of the town who enjoyed the services and moved here with, you know, prior to starting a family. And, you know, that's sixteen years ago. So it started with the Finance Committee and you start to get that peek behind the curtain and you start to realize all the hard work that goes on. And I'll, I'll say that, you know, watching, so early in Connor's tenure is when I came on board and to see his growth and the growth of all the department heads and how fortunate we are in this town to have such talented people working for us and doing so much with so little. This is stuff I didn't think about or even, you know, I lived that oblivious and I, and I'm now preaching and Tom Bressard's here and challenged us to bring at least ten people to the last PACE committee meeting. And I'll say, I hope we all bring twenty or thirty to this next one. But it's people like Tom that inspired me to get involved too, because Tom was a newly elected Select Board member. And I remember going and listening to him and Chuck King at, you know, one of their campaign stops. And it, it was finally, you know, that aha moment when you start to realize what it takes to run a town, a community. This is democracy, right? This is, this is where it works, this is what's difficult. It's like watching the sausage be made and nobody wants to see that. But that's important. Civil discourse is important and it's super important that we engage in, like the PACE committee's been doing, engaging the community with this nineteen-member committee, digging into the weeds and coming out and saying, man, we've been there. We know what's in there, there's no surprises, there's, there's nobody doing anything underhanded here because unfortunately, that's the rap that government gets, is that, what do you mean? Our budget's a hundred million, you guys can't run a town with a hundred million dollars? And I think that this team and Connor points out real quickly, a lot of the costs that continue to go up in all of our personal lives continue to go up for this community as well. Whether it's our insurance costs, our healthcare costs, all these costs that continue to go up, we need, we've not been able to stay with or keep up with and, and that's what hurts, right? That's what hurts, like we talked about, the folks that are going to feel the most when we either make these cuts or we go for a, an override that allows the money to be there to, to pay for the services that we all depend on and we all realize now are quite lean when compared to our comparable community. So I'm just, I feel very fortunate that I've had the ability at, you know, should have happened fifteen, twenty years prior, but at least having a young family and being able to get out there and speak to other young families and say, hey, it's important that we come out, listen, learn and absorb as much as we can because I was an oblivious member for many years.
Jamie.
It's interesting you share that perspective because I came to this, my, my dedication to volunteering through Finance Committee and Select Board came from a place of being a planning student and coming in with a totally different perspective of like, I'm going to come in and change the world. You guys clearly haven't thought about grants and haven't thought about these reciprocal programs and all of these things. And everything I brought up, a lot of these ideas, this town was doing. So, you know, these things have been thought of. And coming in with that more academic perspective into reality was a big wake-up call. And I went through the same process you did, but from a totally different angle, same conclusion, same reality. And it's been, you know, a wild journey through the past seven years of going through the ups and downs of this experience as part of this community. I don't think anybody takes any of what we're experiencing lightly. It's a very heavy feeling. I, you know, I have two of my own children. We have a senior who lives with my father-in-law. I have two parents in Stoughton who are facing these same issues in their community, but they're working on moving into retirement, what that uncertain future feels like. On top of the fact that all kinds of things are in a state of uncertainty right now. You know, it's, it's a very difficult time. So I just wanted to kind of build on what you said with the different perspective. I had some questions as you were both speaking and some points I wanted to make. As you're both talking about things that have to be cut, things like the community policing, which we know has helped through two hundred and fifty-nine calls for outreach, the paramedicine program and what that's brought to the community. I don't look at that and see a cut. I see a really big hit on investment. And we're seeing this at all levels in government right now. Like, yes, things can be trimmed and can be tightened up, but we've been doing that in Easton for a very long time. So when I think of two hundred and fifty-nine calls, what happens to those people? How many of those now turn into calls that are going to be putting more demand on the police and on the fire and on other people in town? We don't have detectives to deal with those problems anymore, like the rate we previously had. So I just see this loss of an investment, loss of talent in this space and it's, it's jarring. I, you know, we've already done so much. You have these great models for the mechanic that has brought valuable expertise and resources to town and been really creative thinking about opportunities for using that. The visibility, it's going to be a huge loss. And those things also pay dividends when it comes to making the community feel safer and mitigating future crime. I, you know, one thing that came to mind as you were speaking, talking about mutual aid. How does that look when other communities are going through the same kind of constraints? And the expectation is this is reciprocal, so we're going to be calling on our neighbors, but they're going to be calling on us too. And I know you've thought about this, but that really scares like the life out of me because that's a big. because that's a big demand.
So, you know, I'm not involved in every community's budget-making process, but in speaking with my counterparts, you know, I think, given our contiguous towns and city, we're probably in the worst position right now.
Yeah.
And I don't see a large jump from any of those communities. You know, in fact, I think some have actually added more ambulance coverage and ladder truck coverage nearby. And so while they may be treading water in some communities, they're not going to go backwards like we are. I think we're going to become the draw. And it does, that does, I've seen it over the years, many years doing this, that, you know, a community will become the draw, if you will, and it takes them a little time and some fix it, and then some don't. And that becomes a real big problem because then town leaders start getting involved and they say, "Hey, what's going on? Like, you can't keep doing this to us." And it can become very contentious. But more often, eventually, communities step up and they eventually fix the problems. Sometimes it's not instant, but they do. And then another community falls into that, and they become that draw community with their draw in mutual aid. It's our turn. There's, you know, to the point about tightening the belt, like, there's no more holes in the belt.
Yep.
We can't get any tighter. And now it's going to affect not just us, but our partners. And, you know, you never like go into a, one of the meetings where we get together monthly as chiefs to try to solve these problems and be that department. But, you know, I have confidence in, in the short term, you know, and really forever, but it does put a real strain that our, our partners will be there. But it doesn't come with the same service. Instead of a five minutes to get an ambulance, it might be 10, 15, depending on where you are in town. And that matters, you know, and that matters. And then we're also going to be tied up chasing calls, not being available for fire calls because we're stuck sitting at a medical waiting for an ambulance to get there. We can't leave. So there's, there's a whole layers of those onions that just keep pouring out, and it's very unfortunate.
Yeah, that really hits me hard. First of all, slightly glad to hear that you, your perspective isn't as doom and gloom as I feel, because I lived through having a relative who was end-of-life in the community. And we relied heavily on the fire department, who was fantastic through that process, and some of the worst days of our lives, right up to that end where she passed. I can't imagine families going through what we went through and having those horrifying couple minutes be longer, because it feels like a lifetime. And, you know, as a member of the sandwich generation, like, a lot of my peers are going through this right now, and challenging families and elders with us. It's not, it's a terrifying prospect, and it really breaks my heart thinking people going through that process, that situation.
An interesting perspective you touched on there, you know, what, you know, somebody who's going to be affected by this is actually our dispatchers.
Yep.
Because they're going to have these people on the phone longer, you know, crying for help, waiting, "Where are we?" You know, and five minutes is a long time when somebody of your family who needs desperate help.
Yeah.
And then if it's double that to 10, that's, that's a long time. And, you know, I, it's a tough job, and it's just another layer of that onion of people that are impacted by all this. But, you know, I try to have a positive effect when I talk, but this is not good.
Yeah.
This is not good at all. This is not good for anybody. It's not good for the community to be safe. It's not good for our firefighters to be safe. But in the end, we can't print money. That's the problem.
I, the other point I had on here ties to that point, which is when people are operating in a space of being burned out, and when you have situations where folks are getting injured on the job, that only compounds and becomes more of a problem. So, you know, we may be throwing more money to solve problems that come from this. So I just, you know, throwing that out there is another thought.
It hurts our reputation. You know, when you lay off transfer firefighters that come to us from another fire department, you lay them off not long after, that becomes a high recruiting problem when we do recover. People are skeptical, they don't want to come here. That's, that's, there's other pieces to that.
Is there any opportunity in looking at more like shared personnel models with other towns on some of these things that are getting cut, or have we already kind of turned over restone on that?
Yeah, we try. I mean, that, that's a whole Massachusetts political discussion, probably not for this meeting, but, you know, regionalization can work.
Yes.
If you put the right circumstances and funds behind it, like the 911 system had the, the funding to do that, and that was the impetus to do it. That doesn't really exist for the fire service, probably for the police departments either. You know, if all of a sudden you started throwing millions of dollars to communities to combine fire departments, well, maybe people would pay attention. But right now, i- it's a very tough thing to do. But we do look at things we can do and can share.
Yeah, and I know it's a hard part of the country.
It is.
Because some other parts of the country, they've taken that model, built it out.
The county model is very prevalent.
Yeah.
Other parts of the country. Unfortunately, New England is not that way.
351, we have a choice of...
Yes, 351 towns.
I think that's a really good point, though, and that's something that's come up a lot with Pace, is, you know, the more time you spend working in these municipal budgets, the more you, in my opinion, you kind of can't reach any other conclusion, but the way that this is structured is completely unsustainable long-term. It's just not realistic to have 351 cities and towns all have these small, basically boutique town halls and fire departments and police departments. And that's in a idiosyncrasy of how old our state is, and we have this legacy of town meeting and a strong local control, which is great in a lot of ways, right? You could participate in town meeting, you can go and learn about your budget firsthand, you could challenge the executive branch, you know, and call them to the mat as a voter in a way that if you have a more distant government, you may not be able to. But we don't have those economies of scale to provide services that county-level governments have. And so we're, we're just kind of always behind the eight ball. So we do regionalize where we can. That's a question that comes up a lot with voters, particularly folks who, you know, work in business or, you know, economics, or like, "Oh, yeah, it's pretty obvious. Just consolidate services with the neighboring towns." Like, that's fine, we have to also comply with the law. And we also have to have a, a legal structure and a financial pathway there. And what the chief is referring to is, we have regionalized 911 dispatch with four communities, which is SEMREC of Easton, Foxborough, Norton, and Mansfield, and that's been a huge success. But the state put millions of dollars into that process to help build High Rock, to incentivize communities to do that, because that's a, quite a big process. It involved us dissolving an entire local department, and it's been worth it. It's, it's an amazing improvement, and we're still today spending fewer dollars operationally than we were in 2019 for better services, which is something you don't get to say often. And so for anyone who's tuning in for a first time or looking at this, and, you know, Jen, to your point, saying, "Well, there must be another way. Is there a way to be more economically efficient?" There are sometimes, and we, we certainly, none of us know everything. We always can do better and get better, and we certainly are up against it and, you know, necessity forces innovation. But those areas where we could achieve huge savings, we did some of those already, like 911 dispatch. We do regionally share a mechanic and charge other communities. That's always an area that we go to, for sure.
That's all my comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't mean to be dramatic, but I think that we're heading for a fiscal cliff. And I think if you refer back to two comments that Connor made in a budget document back in, after we adopted the budget in June of 2020, he said that after the conclusion of town meeting, the adoption of a fiscal year 2021 budget, the community will need to confront the town's persistent structural revenue deficit to consider the long-term implication of repeatedly underfunding services across all departments. And then again in 2024, unless the current cost pressures trends in this area of healthcare, school transportation, utilities, and other fixed costs significantly curtail, it is probable that cuts to town and school services may be required in fiscal '26. Those two things are absolutely true. And I first want to compliment the Pace Committee and Tom and Nancy for the work they've done over the last month, number of months, and to you both in your roles, and David in his, his role, that it's unacceptable to me that we would go into fiscal '26 with, with the cuts that you guys are talking about. It's unacceptable for the safety of the community, for the kids in our school programs, and for our employees. And I, and I think that it is, to Connor's credit, the way he presents the information, the way you've presented the information, if people are paying attention, it's real. It's not some fantasy. It's not something we can cut here, we can cut there because we overspent or we over... It's not true. It's not true. And I think the Pace Committee has been in the forefront of providing that information to the general public. And I, as, as my colleague Jamie Stevan said, we hope that we can bring 10 or 15 or 20 people to Wednesday's meeting of the Pace Committee, so people can understand the real issues that we're facing here and what the dramatic impact will be if we have to go into fiscal '26 with those budget cuts that you're talking about. And it's, it's, for me, I've been in this town since 1980. I've seen it grow from 12,000 to 15,000 to 25,000, 26,000 people. And, and I understand the demands that are made upon our town government by those 26,000 people. And as my colleague Jen Stacy talked about, I, I was a big supporter when you guys came up with the idea of the community outreach, the mental health person, I mean, just some incredible things that you guys do, and the creativity that you show, the creati... The amount of work that DPW does with the amount of staff they have is extraordinary, extraordinary. And I just think that it's time for folks to, to pay attention, to say, "This is real, and how are we going to, how are we going to change how our perspective, our potentials if we don't do something right now?" And, and I, and I think it's, it's incumbent upon all of us to articulate that. I spend a lot of time, every time I get a chance, to say to somebody, "Have you, have you, have you watched the Pace Committee? Have you read the material? Have you looked at the Town Crier?" Because it's, it's critical for the folks to, to come to a realization that we really need to make some changes going forward. And it's not, we're not blowing smoke. This is real. And I hope that we see a huge turnout at the Pace meeting on, on Wednesday. And I, I know that Tom and Nancy will do a hell of a job presenting, as will members of the committee. And, and I think there, there probably were members of the committee who went into the meetings thinking that maybe there was something that we were not doing well. And I think all of them, from my perspective, have now realized that this is real. And, and I love this community. I raised my kids in this community, my grandkids, and, and I want to see it continue to strive and thrive. And I've taken enough of your time.
So a couple of the things that I was thinking about, you know, we, people don't really recognize something until it's like a crisis situation when it comes up, and then it's like, "Wait, what, how did we get here?" Every year that I've been on the board, we've done remarkable work, cut, making cuts, adjustments, improvements, you know, even back when I started putting LED light bulbs in, like, always trying to find cost-saving measures. But when you do it efficiently like that, and people don't feel an impact because you're doing a good job, nobody knows all this stuff. It, like, it's like, "Oh, have you ever thought about, like, evaluating your department and make cuts?" Like, and, and I'm not being fresh when I say that. That's an, like, that's what people think. That's what I would think. That's, when I went for, you know, you were talking about what you thought beforehand, I was thinking the same thing, like, "What are they doing with all the money?" And then, you know, even the people that are in the Citizens Academy, the people that are in Pace, once they start to learn what really is going on here, they're shocked that we're even able to do it with, with the limited means that we have. Something I'm very concerned about is we, one of the cuts that we made last year was training. And that is so dangerous. It's dangerous for the community, it's dangerous for our staff, and, and now we're definitely not bringing training back again. So there's other cuts we've made leading up to here that, that we're not really taking up a lot of time speaking about, but they're not coming back the next year. These aren't like temporary cuts. Once we lose these, they don't come back. And I, I'm really scared about that. You know, I'm scared for myself, my family, my community, and for the people that work here. The other thing is, that I've noticed, is that when there's emergencies, there's clusters of them. So it's not like there's a car accident there, and a couple hours later, there's a medical emergency here. They all happen at the same time. And with, you know, limited resources to do that, I think, I just can't even imagine how that's going to happen, and I'm very worried about that. I'm worried about the, the services that we're able to deliver, but I'm also worried about what that does to the psyche of people whose job it is to help people, that we don't give them the tools to do their job, they can't do a good job, and that's just awful. And I'm very worried about that. The other thing that I had was, if we're down to the, to below where we want to be with staffing, and somebody has maternity leave or paternity leave, or an injured on duty, or has to take family leave to care for, we don't have the, the margins to be able to do that. And if it's three people, we're in big trouble. So I just want people to think about that. It's not, these, these positions are not easy to be replaced. And then if we have to force overtime to do that, we're just, it's just not healthy. I, I do not want our first responders to be suffering from poor, poor environmental health or mental health stress. So, you know, I hope people are thinking about that as well. And also, you know, from a, a business and a business risk, you know, our credit rating, this impacts a lot of other things that we're doing. And, and, you know, I know we talk about that a lot, but this is, I think that people really need to hear it again. Just, just the, it will take, it will be so much harder to build back after this. So I hope that people are thinking of that. Now, at the same time I say that, I'm also very concerned about, there's a lot of people in the town that are not going to be able to, to be able to sustain an increase. And we've worked super hard to put all kinds of services in place to be able to help people that are income-eligible with that. I feel like we should probably start promoting that again so that people are aware. But we don't take this lightly. We're losing sleep over this, I know, as a board, and certainly you guys as, as leaders in the departments and Connor and staff. I don't want people to, to look at this and think, you know, we haven't tried everything possible. And putting together the Pace Committee, meeting every other week since Labor Day, five-hour meetings, like, these, and everybody goes to the meeting, and everybody's putting in 100%. The schools are, are putting in their time, the unions are putting in their time. Nobody's come up with, with the amazing solution that nobody's thought of. So I hope people realize that we really have put a lot into this. We, we take it very seriously, and we're going to present, you know, we're going to present a, a balanced budget one way or the other. But I hope that people aren't coming to town meeting saying, you know, this is the first time they ever heard of this. Do we have any questions?
We do have one.
Okay.
Are there any capital projects that were approved or in the pipeline that can be delayed?
So the capital budget is different from the operating budget, but I'll, I'll let you give the details on that, Connor.
Sure, thanks, Oddie. It's a fair question. It's one that's coming up quite a bit right now. Obviously, folks, when we're in such a tough operating position, start looking for, where are there any opportunities at all to reduce the pressure on our departments? And our capital budget is funded through a mixture of, the typical capital budget is funded through a mixture of two things. One is available free cash, which is either unspent operating funds from a closeout of the year before, or revenue that you collect in excess of your estimates. The other form is through borrowing. And so I'll get to exempt debt after, because that's really important. But when you look at the town's borrowing costs, right? So we carry, it's called debt service in the budget, it's a fixed cost. That's something we work very closely with, the Finance Department, with the Capital Planning Committee, who's a group of citizens who have to administer a bylaw for the capital plan that prioritizes capital requests of all of our departments based on safety. So if they're going to prioritize replacing an ambulance, sooner than they would prioritize a copier at town hall. In an ideal situation, we would have more free cash on hand to pay for those, so you're not incurring long-term costs in the operating budget with debt. But our non-exempt debt, so that's debt, that's not things like Blanche Ames, it's not things like Oliver Ames, it's not things like the Police Fire Public Works, that, that has an impact on your operating position, right? Because that's just a recurring cost that's carried in your normal operating budget. Our exempt debt burden is actually quite low. We, we spend less than 3% of our operating budget on non-exempt debt. So that means that principal and interest payments on normal capital projects is less than 3% of our $100 million budget. It's actually arguably too low. Ratings agencies do want to see you appropriately investing. But because we've had so much pressure in our operating budget for so long, that's been one of the things that's weighed heavily on our appetite for borrowing. So we've cut back on some big things over time, like we used to do half-million-dollar borrows annually to supplement road funds because those are chronically underfunded by the state, and we've trimmed those things back gradually over time. As far as immediate projects, the, and Wendy, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the anticipated, when we go to town meeting and do a borrowing, we have to forecast our multi-year debt service impact estimates, and we have baked that into, I believe, the current debt line. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. And so, not that it's, it's not nothing, everything adds up, but the exempt, the, the non-exempt debt, so that's your normal borrowing in the operating budget, is projected to be at about 2.9 million going into next year. That's an increase of about 300,000 since four years ago. So that's less than 3%. That's an increase of about 300,000 since four years ago, so that's less than 3% a year. So we've already been working pretty hard to keep that budget pretty tight. So it's a very long way of saying, we'll definitely take another look, but very likely not. Larger projects that I think folks are probably thinking of when they ask that question, things like Blanche Ames or police-fire public works, those are done through a debt exclusion. And those borrowing costs are much more substantial. There are multiple millions of dollars, but those are not impacting the operating position because the way a debt exclusion works is that voters approve a dollar-for-dollar match. So if you end up with a $5 million annual bond payment for Blanche Ames, the tax levy increases by 5 million to pay for that. And when Blanche Ames is paid off, then that tax increase goes away as well. So it seems counterintuitive. One of the questions we've been getting a lot is how can we possibly have money for all these buildings? We don't have money to employ the people to work in them. It's because they come out of different revenue streams that are limited by state law. We can't redirect those capital funds. So let's say we delayed one of those projects, all we would do is increase its cost. We have to do them. That's why we put them before the community and why folks voted. If you delay that, it, it doesn't reroute a dollar to the operating budget. It doesn't contribute to fixing the deficit, and arguably, it just continues to exacerbate it because our public works department that we've established is already under-resourced, is throwing good money after bad, trying to stretch the last few years of life out of a bunch of facilities that were built in the 19th and early 20th century. So we'll take a look at the, the non-exempt projects, but that is a, quite a small bit of our budget that's increased very modestly over time, but we'll, we'll definitely take a look.
Okay. Any questions from anyone in the audience? All right.
No, I don't have a question. I just have a comment that I, I hope you get a lot of people Wednesday night. I mean, honestly, because I came early tonight to get a parking space and a seat, and I think there was really only one other person here that wasn't here representing a department. So I hope, I hope people understand, you know, how dire this is. And my hat's off to the fire department because I went through that with a family member and the people were unbelievable.
Tom, did you have anything you wanted to add? No? Sorry to put you on the spot. Now I'm calling on people like a teacher.
No, that's okay. Tom Broussard, 28 Armor Lane, PACE Committee Chair. I would just echo a lot of what you said, Dottie. I was going to stand up if you didn't, and I appreciate that you mentioned it, that we really find ourselves as a community in a difficult spot because there are plenty of people that need to use our food pantry. There are plenty of people that are on fixed income. And so at the same point, I speak with thorough conviction that we know that our departments, our schools operate with less and that they get a tremendous amount done as a result. The numbers show it. I think the anecdotal stories show it. The human aspect that we're able to share shows it, and I've had my own experiences with both the fire department and the police department to personally support what most of you have already said. I would just ask that everybody be thoughtful because there's a human face on both sides of this coin. There are employees of ours, town employees, that give so much. There are people in our community that giving an extra $100 is a lot. So there, if this was an easy problem to solve, I think we would all do it. But I know, I think we all know what we would like to see done, and I just ask the Select Board to continue to support those people that might be disadvantaged and impacted, I guess, an outsized impact by an override, if that's what comes to pass, and just keep them in mind because we know that there's a real strong human element to what we're talking about, and we really do appreciate the community engagement. It's been great, and we hope everybody continues to show up, learn, and, you know, hopefully we can get to the right place, come in. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. I know this is really hard for you, both personally and professionally, to come in and, and talk about this, and I can feel, I can feel the energy of, you know, it's, usually we have so many, so many things to be happy about, and it's usually a very exciting time when you guys come. So this is, this is really, it's tough, and I think that this is where the community's going to show its values, and hopefully the community will be there to support what we need to do.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
And I also want to recognize the deputy chiefs that are, that are here as well for police and fire. Thank you for being here and being such strong supporters. And health and community services, Kristen Kennedy and David Field, and Linda, Wendy, everybody that's taken this very seriously.
I have one question for Connor. When is the next change memo ballpark? I know there's some things...